Good evening. This is Luke Revan, manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the board is conducting this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the township's YouTube channel. Public notice that this meeting was posted on the township website consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is also visible on your screen. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as the moderator of this webinar, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature, which is located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address before asking a question. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Winters.
Good evening. Welcome to East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors' regular session of March 18th, 2021. Do I have any public comment on agenda items, Luke?
Let's give everyone a chance to get my attention if there's any comment on agenda items. Again, anyone interested will need to use the attendee chat feature, which is located on the left side. Just give me a heads up and I'll unmute your microphone. I see none.
Okay, and let's move on now to the minutes of the previous meetings, treasurer's report and authorization to pay the bills.
Is there any minutes? I don't see any minutes in the packet.
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think we're just gonna go right on to the treasurer's report and authorization to pay the bills.
Right, we have a standard agenda format, so occasionally we'll have Roman numeral items with no action items, and that's the instance.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. I'll make a I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report and pay the bills.
I'll second without the except with the exception of any checks payable to Mark Jonas or to the solicitor, Michael Clark.
Mr. Chairman, that's not, that's not, you can't second the motion and amend it at the same time. Mr. Scribbler's attempt is to change the nature of the motion, so it's not a proper second.
Okay, I'll second George's motion to pay the bills as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, moving on to the reports. We're going to have a motion for the township's managers' report, the building inspectors' report, township roadmaster's report, and the police department's report.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept our township managers' report, the building inspectors' report, the roadmasters' report, the police department report, and the fire company report.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, is do we have Joe online here?
Um.
Don't think so.
I see, I've got someone logged in as John, and that may be John Edwards, who is the president of the fire company, but I do not see Deputy Chief Joe Edwards on this list.
Okay. John, is that, I mean, is there anyone from the fire department that had wanted to speak this evening? I know we've done that in the past, they had wanted to. So if there's no one from the fire department that's gonna be presenting the report, then we can move on.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to have a motion to accept the East Brandywine Fire Company report for February 2021. There is no speaker on that subject.
I did include that in the last motion. I included the fire department.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We're good.
We're done.
Yep.
Okay. Great. All right, let's go on to old business now. Act 537 Sewer Facilities Plan: Responses From Outside Agencies and Authorization To Advertise For Public Comment. Luke and Mr. Joe Baldas, I believe, is here.
Yeah, I'm in the process of unmuting municipal authority engineer Joe Baldas's connection, but I can get started with an introduction. The last time, this was an agenda item before the board. Staff was seeking board permission to adopt a draft plan to distribute to outside agencies for comment. This evening, our two agenda items are to briefly summarize the feedback we've received from outside agencies and then ask the board for permission to advertise for public comment. And that public comment will be in the form of, well, the advertisement will be in the form of available in the township building for review, available online for review, and advertised in the paper. The feedback format will be an online reporting system and a paper reporting system that will be available in the township building. Joe, can you hear me?
I can, Luke. I'm sorry. For some reason, I wasn't seeing my mic. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, sorry about that. Always a glitch somehow electronically, but I'm here now. So I did miss part of that, Luke. Seemed like there was a comp meeting that jumped up there briefly. And I lost part of that.
I think, I think, I think that that connection trouble.
I'm worried it should be. Okay.
Joe, if you would reintroduce yourself here, I think we lost a significant portion of your past comment.
Okay, this is Joe Baldas. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I am the municipal authorities engineer. Okay, thanks for the thumbs up, Luke. What Luke has presented on the screen here shows, shows us where we are, you know, kind of like those maps that we have at the mall. I'd say that we're a little bit further than, or we are right there where the municipality is conducting the 30-day comment period. We've received comments from the Chester County Planning Commission, very minor comments, and have made those revisions. We have not received any comments from the Health Department, although we have asked them numerous times for their input on the 537 plan. There is a provision in the guidance document that allows us to move forward if we don't get any comments from the Health Department. So I would recommend that we do so unless we do receive comments here shortly. And then there were some comments, I believe, that were discussed at the planning commission, although we don't have those now. So I believe that we've addressed the comments that we have in-house, and I think that we are in a position where the plan could be advertised through public notice for public comment.
Okay. And how are you guys making out with the, I believe, last time we spoke, the board had wanted the, to have some kind of agreement in place with any landowner that municipal authority proposes to include on their, you know, as far as they're on their 537 update, I guess specifically the affluent area. Have you guys, have you guys were able to get an agreement in place with Mapleview?
Mr. Winters, we have an agreement in place with Mapleview that indicates that they would construct, provide the area and construct the drip fields in their entirety. There is no agreement with Weaver Trect at this point. I don't believe we're at that point in time right now. There is a planning module that's floating around for Weaver Trect, where we did get some comments back from DEP, and we're in the process of addressing those comments and making recommendation to the township to address the comments. So to answer your question, there was an agreement with Mapleview in the past for construction of the drip fields. There is no agreement right now for Weaver, nor is there anything for Plank at this point.
With the agreement, agreement in place with Mapleview, is that an agreement to utilize their 50% extra set aside, not for the needs of their development, but for the needs of the public? Has there been an agreement in place as far as that?
Certainly, asshole.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was getting some feedback there. There is an agreement in place for them to build and to construct 150% of the drip disposal area. I think they, I do believe the agreement is silent on use by others. I would have to pull that agreement up and review it. I haven't looked at it in some time. I'm sorry, can you guys hear me okay?
Joe, the connection is a little intermittent and there's some feedback, but when you do come through, you're loud and clear.
Okay, so I apologize for the bad connection. As I had stated, the, the agreement with the case is we that the agreement is silent on whether future development can utilize that. I would really need to go back and look at the agreement. It's been some time since I've looked at it.
But you guys, is that, I mean, I think that this right is the November, December meeting, you had said that you're gonna go back and, and have agreements in place with them to utilize any land that's proposed for the municipal authority to use and not just for that neighborhood. So I guess are we, are we, are you, do you want us, what's the action item you're requesting? I mean, because I think the last time we left it that, before we moved further to frame plan approval for advertising for the public, we're going to like to see some kind of agreement in place, you know, if we're going to be utilizing land not owned by the municipal authority at that time or the township.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Looks like you were cutting out on my end as well. I caught bits and pieces of your conversation there, Mr. Winters. I really don't know how to respond because I didn't catch it all, but something about having an agreement in place prior to public notice?
Well, yeah, as far as the getting the plan finished, you know, which is the finalized after the public comment, the board had requested that municipal authority have agreements in place with any landowners that their land will be utilized for the disposal needs of anyone other than that site.
Okay, I understand where you're going with that. I honestly, I'll have to look into that a little bit. Like I said, I know there's an agreement with Mapleview. I'm sure there's no agreement with Weaver Trect at this point. We'll have to look into it.
Okay.
The other, the other part of your question, Mr. Winters, was what is the action item this evening? And, and the action item this evening would be permission to direct staff and the municipal authorities engineer to advertise the plan for public comment.
Okay, and then, and then if there's no public comment, then what is it? That's the finalized plan?
You would still have to adopt the plan, Mr. Winters. You get another chance, another bite at the apple after the public comment period to basically finalize the plan if we're following the flow chart and then adoption. I don't know if you can see where Luke's presentation here, but the plan gets finalized and then the municipality has the ability to adopt the plan. After that, then it gets submitted to DEP. It's about 180-day period, sometimes more, sometimes less. But it goes to DEP for their approval and then plan is finalized at that point.
Okay. So I guess if, if the board approves the 30-day advertising for public comment, I guess that'll give you more time to reach out and get some kind of agreements in place before we adopt the plan. Is that what you prefer, Luke?
Yeah, my preference is to keep the ball rolling. I want to maximize the time where we are open for public comment. And yeah, I'm inclined to move forward and then any, any remaining reservations the board may have about adopting the 537 plan be resolved prior to your vote to send it to DEP.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. I'd be as long as we, you know, I'd like to see some of these agreements, you know, done sooner or later just to, just to kind of get ahead of the ball, but I'm fine with advertising it. If Kyle or George, do you have any, any comments, concerns?
Nope, I'm fine.
I'm fine as well.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Uh, yeah, no.
I'll make a motion to authorize staff and the municipal engineer to advertise the Act 537 in order to receive 30-day public comments.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. I do believe Joe.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you. I'm really sorry for the bad connection, but I appreciate you hearing me as much as you can. And we'll, I'll share the, the agreement with the municipal authority and we'll try and get something scratched out for you all.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for updating us too, Joe, and don't worry about the, you know, the, any complications with the technology. It happens all the time for everyone, so.
Yeah, I can't wait till we get back in the same room together because it's just not very efficient this way. I gotta dash out for another supervisors' meeting. Thank you very much. Any questions, please give me a call and we'll, we'll try and address it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you so much. All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. And then moving on now, we have for new business, scheduled conditional use hearing for 200 corner catch, Luke?
Right, so we have a conditional use hearing this evening and we have an application for our second conditional use. The application we've received is for the, a major home occupancy, a business that is larger than a minor home occupancy in a residential district. There's two timelines that, that affect the scheduling of a conditional use hearing. One is that the applicant is entitled to a hearing within 60 days of submitting a completed application. And the second is that within our code, the planning commission must receive notice of all the materials for a completed application 45 days before a hearing. So that creates approximately 15-day window. For the application we're considering this evening, that applicant, that 15-day window happened to fall during a regularly scheduled night meeting of the board of supervisors. And so we were able to do what we planned to do tonight, which is to gavel this meeting closed and then gavel open the conditional use hearing at 8:00 PM. The 15-day window for the application for 200 corner catch includes your regularly scheduled work session, which is an 8:00 AM meeting. And I, it's my opinion, that's not an appropriate time to, to have a conditional use hearing since some members of the public may not be able to attend. So this evening, I'm asking the board to take out your, your calendars and help me schedule a date and time for the conditional use hearing for 200 corner catch. I'm gonna say the range of dates that are available.
I think you said May 5th to 15th.
Right, so exactly. So the, the, the planning commission where the conditional use hearing or the conditional use would be considered would be May 5th. That's an evening meeting and the 60-day clock expires on May 15th. So I would be happy to schedule any time that's convenient for the three of you between the 5th and the 15th of May.
When's our, when's our May BOS?
To be Thursday, the 6th at 8:00 AM.
No, no, the next one, I'm sorry. The night meeting.
Would be probably the 20th. 14 days later.
Yeah, so I'm.
Exactly correct. Yeah, that'd be too late on the 20th.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you guys wanted to, I don't have a problem either way. I can make either both meetings or one meeting. I was gonna say the other suggested is to move the board of supervisors' meeting up a few days to accommodate both, but I could care less either way. I can make either work.
It sounds like it has to be a special meeting, though, the way you have it set up, right, Luke?
Well, it'll need to be advertised as the conditional use hearing either way.
Yeah, but it's separate from any supervisor meeting is what I'm saying.
No, we're doing a conditional use hearing tonight, so it can be during a board of supervisors' meeting.
Well, technically, you close the board of supervisors' meeting and begin the conditional use, but they could be at the same night for the convenience of the members of the board.
I'm fine either way, whatever you guys want.
Not flexible, too.
Yeah, me too.
Luke, Luke, this, this is Mark Jonas. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sometimes to facilitate the scheduling, you can ask the applicant for an extension of time. They can extend the time in writing of the 60 days. If that would help, it's sometimes applicants will often cooperate in that regard, particularly if it's not a long time of a delay. So just give you another option.
And if we did that, then the conditional use hearing could be on May 20th, the night of the supervisors' meeting?
Correct. It would follow immediately. You go off record and then you go on for the conditional use hearing.
It's exactly what Mr. Scribbler said. That's correct.
Yep, okay. Do we just need them to grant and give a, ask for an extension, right?
Yes.
Right.
All right, it, it sounds like there's consensus. All three board members fine with me asking the applicant for an extension to schedule the hearing on May 20th?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Now, moving on to subdivision zoning applications. Preliminary final plan approval lot line change at wastewater treatment plant at the states of Downforge, Luke?
Yeah, I can tell you right now, we're gonna have a little bit of technical difficulty. I'm unable to promote Fred Eber to be a speaker. See who else is in the room who can speak on this subject. Okay, I am, I am promoting Gia, who is the representative of Metropolitan Development Group. Fred, if you are near a landline, you can join using the 1-800 number that you can see on the lower, lower left-hand side of the screen. It's a 1-800 number. Let's see if I can't find a way to flash that up on the screen. In the meantime, hi, Gia, can you hear us?
Hi, Luke, how are you?
I'm just fine. Thank you for your patience with the technical difficulty. Do you know who on behalf of the applicant would like to speak on this besides?
I'm able to go through it. Justin Brewer from DL Howes here as well, the engineer who drew up the plan. But I could give a quick summary and then if we need to have any comment, we can, you know, wait for you to work through with them if, if need be. This is a revised, if you're okay with me proceeding, let me know.
Yes, please do.
Okay, this is a revised lot line change for the sewage treatment plant that's going to be dedicated to the authority, hopefully in the near future. We had done this process once before and in reviewing the plan and the as-built and the improvements that were being constructed. The last approved plan, we found that there were certain of the improvements easements that were outside of the lot line. So this is just a revised lot line plan to include all of the improvements within the sewage treatment plant lot. To my understanding, it's been reviewed by Joe Baldas's office and Panoni, and they have approved the lot line delineation to include. Now we've corrected all the mistakes from last time. And then we received two recommendations from the planning commission last week, one for preliminary and one for final. And we're looking for approval by that tonight, the board of supervisors.
Thank you for that, that introduction. I have promoted someone who has called in by phone. That may be Fred. And also, Mr. Brewer is now able to speak. All right, yeah, I, thank you, Gia, for the introduction. Yes, the, the board voted to grant preliminary and final plan approval in July of 2020, and this plan set is slightly revised from that. Because the application received final plan approval in July, this slight revision is actually being treated as a new application for which the planning commission has recommended preliminary and final plan approval. There are nine waivers requested.
Thank you, Luke.
Yeah, so the, there are certainly seven of the waivers are located on the plan set itself. And then there are two additional waivers that have to do with the, the, one has to do with the timeline for consideration that, that, that the application can be received less than 14 days prior to the planning commission meeting. And the second one had to do with all the necessary relief to submit for consolidated preliminary slash final plan approval in a single vote of the board of supervisors.
George, Kyle, do you guys have any questions or concerns?
I have nothing.
Nope.
No, okay. Well, I'm fine with it, you know, planning commission. So what, so Luke, what are we, what's the action item? You want us to approve? Approve this?
Actually, I, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm gonna punt that question to, to solicitor Mark Jonas. I know that he has some proposed, a proposed motion to grant preliminary final. Mark, are you there?
I am, I am.
Could you summarize the format of a motion if the board is so inclined to grant preliminary final approval?
Certainly, based on the application that was submitted as a combined preliminary final plan and based upon the reviews by town staff, by township professional consultants. I think the appropriate motion is a motion to grant preliminary final approval subject to conditions and the grant of the waivers, and we will follow that with a notice of decision in writing.
Okay. Kyle, do you agree with it?
Yeah.
I, correctly, if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, but I think the, the motion at this point can just be so moved by one member of the board.
That, that's absolutely correct. Few words would do the job. And I so moved, that would be, and any one of the three could do that. They'll all stand up at once.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Moving on now to the public comment on non-agenda items. I'd see we do have Jerry DeFrank from Appicost Country Club H.O.A. Executive Board there. How you doing, Joe?
Please stand by. He can't yet speak. All right, Joe, can you hear us? Joe, I see that your connection is by phone. If you're speaking and we can't hear you, you may need to hit star six on your keypad to unmute your phone.
Is there any other public comment on non agenda items?
Real quick, just, this is gonna be a simple one. We had an issue with the trash can over at Hopewell. And I did receive a phone call from the, from the board president and the, the, the trash is, is continuing to be a problem. And I know Luke was over there to pick up trash the other day. I think the one question that I had is I was under the impression that the trash can was put on township property. And I believe the roadmaster thought so as well. The association, I think, believes it was put on their property. The trash can was, was since removed, so I don't know what your guys' take is on this, but I'm sure you've seen the pictures in the, in the the dialogue going on recently. So because he had reached out to me, I was, I was not in the area. I wasn't able to take his call and I told him I would follow up.
You talking about Mike Pacelli, who you spoke to, Mike Pacelli, president?
I didn't speak with him. He left me a text message.
Yeah. Well, he was the one that asked that the trash can be removed. That he, I guess he felt it was on HOA property, thought it was unsightly. He felt that one homeowner had requested it and that it was the HOA's decision whether to put something like that on the property.
So according to Matt Van Lu and, and I spoke with Luke earlier about this because Luke went and picked the trash up, it, it was on township property. So it, hey, whatever you, I already said I was in favor of the trash can. You guys said no, so I just wanted to bring to your attention that it was brought up again.
And for clarity, I'd say that the, the, the littering that I have picked up on two occasions of the bagged dog waste has been on township property. I, I cannot confirm because I never saw on site the location where the can was placed. If the can was where the littering is, then it was on township property.
What is Luke, what do you feel should be done? Do you feel the can should be restored?
I, I, I really don't have strong feelings. My frustration is that, that, that this has kind of pitted neighbors against neighbors and the disappointment of the folks who were in favor of the can is resulting in them littering on township property, which I think is unfortunate. What I would like is a, a decision and then that decision to be respected by, by all the users of the trail. We, we worked quite long and hard to secure the grants and to build that trail extension. I'm thrilled that people use it. I'm, I'm very disappointed that there's littering.
But Kyle, what did Mike's message say? Did Mike say he wants the can back on township property?
No, he actually, his message, I'm not going to get into all the details of it just out of privacy and respect, but basically the way that I took it was to be that the board, the board didn't approve it and that, that it was on, on the association's property. I was since talking to the township manager Luke, as well as our roadmaster who, our roadmaster informed me that the times that they did pick it up, it was at least a quarter of the way full every time they went there to pick it up. So he thought it was a, a good spot for the trash can. However, it was brought to you guys and myself and I was in favor and you guys weren't and, and it was removed. But that's, that's last, we, we dealt with it.
Well, if the township, if Luke and Matt feel that if, if it's on township property, I guess we can do what we want to. And it sounds like if we bring the can back, this littering could stop. Is that the gist?
One would think.
I, I would certainly hope so. I, I don't think that this is a, a discreet pile of multiple bags of dog waste left in a specific location. I'm pretty sure this isn't. I, this is protest.
Well, I don't have a problem if HOA had, doesn't have a problem and it's, well, if it's our township ground, I don't have a problem with putting the can back and seeing what happens. If this could potentially resolve this back and forth and the littering, as long as I guess it's on our property.
I, I think the one concern that the biggest concern was the, the looks of the, the, the trash receptacle. And I've had a couple of residents reach out to me via email saying that they would be willing to, if the trash can did go back. Apparently this is all over social media and I'm not on social media, so I haven't been following it, but a, a few residents have alluded that they would build a nice box to go around it and, and keep it somewhat described, you know. I don't, is that the one we had there, Luke?
No, this is not the one that was there. What was there was a like a, like a 60 gallon oil drum. Yeah, it was a drum. This is, this is a model of can that Parks and Rec has requested that staff order on a trial basis. That Parks and Recreation likes this can can be bolted in a single place. And so we're going to get a few of these to try out. This is certainly more attractive than a oral, oil barrel.
I would agree.
Can we get green?
I'm sorry?
Can we get green bags?
Waste bag?
Sure, you could probably buy, we, we, we don't have any on hand, but I'm sure they sell green bags.
Basically, people are supposed to, if they have a dog, they're carrying their own bag. But I like that receptacle. If you're gonna get a couple, I, I'd go for that receptacle there.
All right, so what do you, like I said, I, I haven't responded, Michael. I haven't had, I haven't had time. I, I was out of the area when he, when he texted me. So you tell me.
Well, if you talk to Michael, Michael's fine to having the trash can go back on our property, something that's more attractive. I would be fine with that if he's, if he's fine with that.
I don't get the impression, I don't get the impression that, that he is fine with the trash can. I'm fine with the trash can only because of the littering issue. I'm also fine with it being on, on township property. I'm not okay with sticking it on HOA property. I understand that completely. But so, so if your motion is to put it on to township property, I'm, I, again, I was in favor of it before. I agree that the nicer trash can receptacle would be, would be better. Then I would clearly be in favor of that on township only property.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reinstall a, a more attractive container on township property in that trail, in that trail area.
All right, and I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you want to try that green one? Are you gonna put that one, Luke? Is that what you're gonna try there?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't discussed it with roadmaster just yet, but I think that the, the, the way we probably, if we're gonna use this, we'd probably mount some kind of ground contact post and then find a way to secure this to that. Yeah, and, and so just not to complicate, it sounds like we have an action item here and that's, that's good to go. The, this is an aerial map of the, the, the area in question. The, the long horizontal parcel is owned in fee by the township. That was the land that was acquired with open space funds for the trail extension. At the cul-de-sac, there is a vertical parcel that is up and down and that is open space B, which is owned and maintained by the, 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 the Hopewell HOA. The, the, basically where those two make a hard right as you're going, going north is where the can was. And that was township property.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there any other comment on public? I believe Joe DeFrank did see, say that he would email Luke. He would catch up with you tomorrow in his email with his concerns.
Yeah, he also, also indicated that he had it working. So Joe, can you hear us? Pardon? You're right. He, he had sent two chat messages, one saying I will send an email to the board tomorrow. And then four minutes later, he sent another one, said it's back and it's working, but I do not hear him.
All right.
Yeah, I.
Maybe follow him, email to him, then Luke, you know, we're trying. Is there any other pub, public comment on non agenda items? And then we'll move on to the, we have a conditional use hearing to get to the application of, I'm gonna get this wrong.
I could, I, I can, I can say that the preferred applicant's acronym is BAPS.
Okay, BAPS, okay. We'll have that at 8:00, 8:00 PM. So if you would like to join us, you can stay connected or call back in at this time. The board will, while we just listen to this application. Any other?
No. So what will happen is when we bang the gavel on this meeting, this, this webinar page will still be active. And individuals who join will see this message, which says that the board of supervisors regular session is concluded. But there'll be no recording or audio until 8:00 PM when the conditional use hearing begins.
Okay. Great. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.